Go ahead, Kevin.
Okay, thank you, Ms. Robertson. Please, if you can, put your microphone on mute just to keep the background noise down. Appreciate it. I'd like to call the February 8th, 2021 meeting of the Town and Niskiuna Planning Board and Zoning Commission to order. Mr. Henry, would you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Present.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Here.
Mr. Conlon.
Here.
Mr. McPartland.
Here.
Mr. Darpino.
Here.
Mr. Oster.
Here.
Ms. Shenfield.
Here.
Ms. Gold.
Resident.
Chairman Walsh.
Here. Thank you, Mr. Henry. We have next up is the approval of the minutes from the January 11th, 2021 meeting. Do I have a motion to approve those minutes? Motion made by Mr. Oster for approval. Do I have a second?
So move, Mr. Chairman.
There's a second by, there's a couple there. I think it was, I know Mr. Scrubby Tennis came in. So we'll go with Mr. Scrubby Tennis on that. Thank you. Corrections, comments, changes to the minutes? I have one comment. If I can pull that up. And it's, uh, oop, I'm on top of it. And it's on page three, line 112. It states in that line, "Mr. Henry discussed the need to address snow removal and garbage." And it's actually Chairman Walsh discussed the need for snow removal and garbage placement. So I'd strike Mr. Henry and add Chairman Walsh. And that's the only comments that I have. Anybody else have any other comments or changes, changes to minutes? No? Okay, then I think, I think it's pretty straightforward change. So let's, uh, we can adopt the, uh, the January 11th, 2021 meeting minutes with that one minor change. I'd appreciate it. All those in favor of adoption with the change signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay. Now, here, no one opposed. We approved the January 11th, 2021 meeting minutes. We have no public hearings tonight, so we'll move right to privilege of the floor. And Laura, you state you have a letter or an email for privilege of the floor tonight?
Yeah, I have one email. I didn't receive any requests to speak tonight. The email that I have says, "Dear Planning Board, thank you for your efforts in getting Ace Hardware to move into a vacant property on Balltown Road. My husband is frequently at hardware stores and generally comes home crabby after visiting Lowe's or Home Depot. He was excited to hear that Ace Hardware is now open and has visited a couple of times. Each time he has a wonder, had a wonderful experience. He finds what he wants quickly and the trip to the store is minutes away. We can walk there. Your process took a long time, but we believe it was worth it. Thank you, resident of Chestnut Lane."
Oh, great. Always nice to hear. Anything else, Laura?
That's all I have.
Okay. Is there anybody online that would like to speak at privilege of the floor? Okay. Hearing no one else, then we'll close privilege of the floor. We'll move on. We have no unfinished business tonight, so let's go right to new business. Under new business, we have several, or six resolutions exactly tonight. First resolution being Resolution 2021-04, Resolution for Plat Plan Approval of a Minor Four-Lot Subdivision at 2627 Troy Road. And in keeping what we've been doing is, uh, we, uh, the resolution obviously has been posted since Friday evening, so it's been available to the public. But I would like to at least read the conditions into the record, if that's okay with everybody. So please be patient with me, all right? So I resolve that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby grant minor subdivision approval for the four-lot minor subdivision of 2627 Troy Road as shown on a map entitled "Overlooked Park Subdivision," Street Number 2627 Troy Schenectady Road, Town of Niskiuna, County of Schenectady, New York, by Advanced Engineering and Surveying P L L C, dated September 10th, 2020, Revision Number 6, entitled "Issued for Minor Subdivision Approval, Dated 1/11/21, Subject to the Following Conditions: 1. In conjunction with recording the plat, the developer shall work with the town legal department to transfer the 1.5 acre land conservation parcel to the Town of Niskiuna. 2. Prior to recording the plat, the street tree planting plan shall be submitted to and approved by the Niskiuna Tree Council. 3. Prior to issuing a building permit, the new houses shall be referred to and reviewed by the Architectural Review Board. 4. In accordance with Chapter 180 of the Soil Erosion and Sediment Control Ordinance of the Town of Niskiuna, the applicant shall put in place soil erosion and sediment control measures sufficient to stabilize disturbed areas. These measures shall be satisfactory to the Superintendent of Watersore and Engineering and shall remain in place until such time as natural vegetation has been successfully established. 5. Should the garage floor elevation for individual lots deviate by more than six inches from the elevations approved for construction by the Planning Board and Zoning Commission or the Building Department, then revised grading plans shall be submitted immediately to the town's engineering office for their review and approval. Depending on the impact to driveway slopes or drainage features such as swales and berms, revised grading plan may need to extend into the subdivision-wide grading plan to ensure impacts to adjacent lots are accounted for. 6. Wetland boundaries shall be recorded and shown on any plot plan of a building lot containing wetlands. Wetlands may not be disturbed, drained, or physically altered in any way without first contact in the Army Corps of Engineers. Additionally, the Town of Niskiuna requires that no land can be disturbed within a 25-foot buffer from the boundary of the wetland. 7. Prior to site disturbance, applicants shall participate in a pre-construction meeting with the Town of Niskiuna and town-designated engineer and shall address any concerns raised by the town. 8. Prior to site disturbance, the subdivision map shall be modified to reflect agreed-upon decisions of the pre-construction meeting, if any, and distribute it as required to the town and to all involved contractors. Final site plan shall be submitted to the town label before construction. 9. Prior to the pre-construction meeting, any engineering and drainage concerns will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town Superintendent of Watersore and Engineering. 10. Prior to the pre-construction meeting, any questions or concerns raised by the town-designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant in a formal letter to the town. 11. Prior to the pre-construction meeting, any minor textual, textual, textual changes to the subdivision plans will be addressed to the satisfaction of the town planning department. 12. The limits of clearing on the subdivision shall be strictly adhered to during construction. For the maximum extent practicable, practicable, the applicant shall retain as many of the sites' healthy trees and natural vegetation as possible. Driveways shall be sited with least possible disturbance to trees. 13. The dedication and preservation of open space is critical to the subdivision proposal, and the Planning Board encourages the town to follow through to ensure that there is a connection between the dedicated new open space and the Leishakil Nature Preserve. And 14. A split rail fence shall be installed along the perimeter of the open space to delineate it from the private property and protect its boundaries over time. Okay, thank you for your patience. And Mr. McPartland, do I have a motion on the resolution?
Yes, Chairman Walsh, I move for adoption.
Okay, move for adoption by Mr. McPartland. Do I have a second? Seconded by Mr. Oster, thank you. And discussion. Just before I turn, I just have one typo that I just wanted, we can update, do a friendly update, but on Condition Number 12, it says, "Shall be sited with least possible disturbance." That's spelled wrong. It's actually S-I-T-E-D, not C-I-T-E-D. Okay? And I think we could just do a friendly correction on that. You had me going there. I had to go look that one up, so I'm like, is that the right one? But, so it's sited, so with an S. Okay, Mr. McPartland, discussion, board?
Um, one, um, question I, preliminary question I had was, do we want to have a condition here that the, um, this resolution be recorded in any deed of sale? Any, any, um, if, should the, in the deed, so that, should the properties change hands, it's, it's reflected there?
I'll defer to Laura. I know we used to have a similar condition, but I think we stopped utilizing it, if I recall. Maybe you can brief us on that, Laura?
Yeah, or Paul can. I mean, I think, um, what we decided is that that blanket resolution shouldn't be written as a general condition. If there's something specific to the deed that would carry forth in perpetuity, like an easement or something, um, that we can mention can be applied to the deed restriction. But when we did modify the resolution conditions for like the amateur subdivision, it was specific to something that would actually come up in a title search that would be important for the deed.
And Laura's correct on that. You can't have generalized items. You have to have something specific. I know, for instance, and I live over in Forest Oaks, and one of the restrictions on my deed is I can't have a camper parked out in my driveway. But that's something very specific. So no, I don't, we, I recommend against having this type of information required as part of a deed.
And I know, Mr. McPartland, and I share your concern. I want to make sure that if Mr. Bissalon, the developer sells the parcel, I wanted to make sure that all those things carry forward. And obviously, our intention is that they all do carry forward. Laura, if they, if they come in for a building permit, somebody besides Mr. Bazoin, do we hand them a copy of the resolution to follow? Or how, how do we handle that in the Building Department?
Yeah, we can, because the resolution does not apply to the applicant, and it applies to the land and the subdivision. So any future owner is bound by the exact same conditions, you know, that are, it's not owner-dependent, it's not person-dependent, it's application and land that this applies to. So yeah, if, if the property changes hands and somebody else comes to get a building permit, we go through all of the resolutions when we check the building permit, and they're bound to them. And if they don't have a copy, we certainly can and do give it to them and say, "This is what we're looking at. These are the conditions you have to meet. This is why you can't just walk away with whatever you want to do." Because these are the, you know, the things that the Planning Board had approved, kind of thing.
Okay. You okay with that, Mr. McPartland?
Oh, sure. Yeah, that makes sense. So I did, if Mr., if the developer, Mr. Bissalion is on the line, I did want to just hear from him briefly, um, um, make sure that he's had a chance to review the, um, the conditions. And also, it's my impression that the TDE comments that are referenced in Condition Number 10, um, can, are all very manageable. Um, but just, it would be nice to hear from him that, um, it's, that's his impression as well.
Sure, Pat. I forwarded you the invite for the, uh, the Tree Council Walk. I already walked with the buyers, the powers and the grinders, and we marked the trees that are to be cut by me in orange tape. Okay? And, you know, Laura, Laura sent out an invite for the Tree Council, and I said, "If I'm working on, working on the corner house, of course, I could come out and walk it with you, or if you have any questions, feel free to stop in and, and talk to me about them." But yes, uh, these, these conditions are all well-known. They're, they're no real problem. The only question that I did have, and it's probably for Paul, is with the deed for the, uh, for the parkland, Paul, does the town prepare that? Because I know I sent the description to Laura. I don't know if you have the description, Paul?
Um, so we only have the legal description. Typically, the developer would give us the full deed, and then our attorney would review it and then say okay to it if he's okay with it.
So I'm giving you a park, and I have to do the deed too?
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's a pretty basic form.
No, I know it is. I'm just saying, I just have to pay my attorney to do the deed, that's all. All right. That answered that question. All right, so, uh...
I can do it. It's easy. I wouldn't want Joel to spend any more money than he has to. I'll do it.
Oh, Paul, I love that.
I was trying to save you some work, Paul.
Finally, finally sending it to town that I love, you know?
Just give me the, the meets and bounds, Joel. Just give me the description, I'll do the deed.
Okay. Laura, can you forward that to him?
Yeah, I can send it.
Thanks. Uh, the other question is, uh, in, in order to get the title for the transfer on the three lots, Stuart said that, Stuart Title said that I have to file the, the plat. So can we file the plat now, Laura?
Um, well, a vote hasn't been taken, but assuming that the vote is in favor, um, typically you can file within a day or two. We just have to double-check some stuff, and you'd have to wrap up the TDE comments.
Oh, that was my question, and the TDE comments, we have to wrap those up beforehand? Because the resolution says that, that 10, I have to res, resolve the TDE comments prior to the pre-construction meeting?
Yeah, I mean, I guess if you're confident, which was what Patrick was asking, that the TDE comments in no way will reflect any of the lot line changes or any easements or, well, there aren't any easements as far as I know on there. You can occasionally, if you record the subdivision and then something does change, you have to go back and re-record it, which just costs you more money. But as long as you're confident that the, um, the lot lines won't change, that's true. The TDE comment, new comes before pre-construction meeting.
Only comment is, I have the same comment too, is that there was no, um, culvert on Lot 1. There's a culvert on Lot 2. Didn't make sense to me that there wasn't one on Lot 1. So adding a culvert, we're not going to change a, a plot plan for adding a culvert. And the other issues are definitely manageable. I need help from Matt and Josh with the, um, with the sewer location and elevation. And I had already talked to you about that, Laura. So I, I just see it as detail. And what I'm, what I'm trying to do is get the plat recorded so that Stuart Title can move forward, because they're extremely slow. So I just want to get the plat filed. And according to Resolution Number 10, or Item Number 10, you know, I can, I have until the pre-construction meeting to resolve the TDE stuff. And that, that probably won't be until the spring, you know? I was considering maybe cutting the trees, you know, while the ground is still frozen. So I think that, that's the plan then, is get the plat recorded, answer the TDE comment, then have the pre-construction meeting, then cut the trees, and do any soil disturbance and swift stuff in the spring. Does that sound okay?
That sounds reasonable. A lot of times, you know, we at least get the first round of comments, and that's why I think Mr. Partland and I had some concerns, because we haven't had, you know, the first round of response from, from you, Joel, on the TDE comments. But they seemed to be pretty straightforward when I looked at them, so I didn't see anything that was going to cause any controversy, I guess. Yes, nothing that couldn't be worked out. And I think Conditions Number 10, and I think it was either eight or nine, would cover working out those responses. And that's why we're at this point where we are tonight.
Sure.
All right. Go ahead, Joel.
I think that was about it. And I, something I mentioned earlier about the Sears houses is Dennis Brennan sent me a link of all the Sears houses, so I was able to pick out the model that we had, you know, because I had a catalog from 1902, but they, they didn't start building Sears houses or offering them until 1908. And that house on a corner was built in 1909.
That's great. Any other questions for the applicant or comments from the board regarding the resolution that's on the table?
Laura, I just have one quick question. Uh, Condition Number 13. Can you just, can I get a little context of what you're trying to, uh, get to there?
I can, I can read it. 13 is, "The dedication and preservation of open space is critical to this subdivision proposal, and the Planning Board encourages the town to follow through to ensure there is a connection between the dedicated new open space and the Leishakil Nature Preserve."
Oh, yeah, that was actually from the CAC, uh, and maybe also the Planning Board. But it was that, you know, when we're doing the subdivision, like the developer has to hand over the parcel to the town, but obviously because it's adjacent to the Leishakil, the public benefit, um, is probably maximized by connecting it to the Leishakil and creating, you know, kind of new opportunities for, for recreation in the town. That's why we wanted to take the land. So it's not anything, um, binding, but it's a memorialization that, like the reason that we wanted the open space and what the Planning Board kind of envisions from the open space is a, an eventual connection with the Leishakil, possibly, possibly if it makes the most sense for the nature conservancy, like dedicating the land back over to the nature conservancy for maintenance, but definitely trying to make that connection so that there opens up all that recreational opportunity for our residents.
Yeah, just to follow on, Mr. Scrubby Tennis, does that make sense as a condition in this resolution? Is that reasonable?
Are you asking me or Mike?
I mean, no, no, I'm asking, okay, Laura, I guess I'm asking you.
Like you said, it's memorializes it. I mean, it's, um, it's, I guess, a suggestion. It doesn't have a lot of meat in it until the, you know, Town Board, uh, the deeds, you know, transferred, and they do something with it. I think that's the intent. Well, I mean, you heard Mr. Briggs said he was going to work on it, so it sounds like that's the intent. You know, once the town possesses the property, whether they, you know, keep it as is or donate it to the nature conservancy, that's, you know, it's up to the town.
All right, that's fine. I can, I can, I can, I can find that acceptable. I think that's okay.
Thank you.
And, um, and I just want to get one thing clarified from the last discussion. So Joel hasn't, Mr. Bazalon hasn't responded at all to any of the TDE statements?
I haven't seen any response yet.
I just, I just got them on Thursday.
Friday.
Friday, actually, even, yeah.
So, so remind me, because my memory's a little fuzzy, do we ever adopt resolutions without at least getting one round of responses? We, we do?
My recollection, yep.
Okay.
I mean, if we, you know, I read through them. If there was something that was like, you know, you got a problem and I, we don't understand this, and it was something serious, I think we'd be talking about that right now. And, um, and if it was something that we had a concern on, or Joel had a concern on, we could pull the resolution. But that didn't seem to be the case. It doesn't sound like, from Mr. Bazoin, you know, point of view, it's not the case. So I think we can work through the, um, the TDE comments.
Okay, that's like, at least the comments there and the condition. I just wanted to, like I said, I, I, I couldn't recall from my notes whether we had done this in the past.
And some of them are going to require drawing changes, you know? It's not like the ones that I saw, so Joel will have to turn that around and get that back in, um, again, before the, before the pre-construction meeting to make sure all the concerns are addressed so you can close it all out.
Mr. Chairman Walsh, just on that question, it just, just, you know, because Number 9 talks about, you know, drainage concerns being addressed to the satisfaction, but it just says it's going to be addressed, the concerns raised by the town-designated engineer will be addressed by the applicant. I don't want to get too legalistic, but is, does that need to be addressed to the satisfaction, you know, of the town-designated engineer? Because it just means, or does that just mean they respond and then that's it?
Well, you know, town engineer, town-designated engineer is working hand-in-hand with, you know, the planning department and engineering.
Yeah, okay.
And they're all going to be involved in the meeting. So, um, I understand when you're concerned the way it may be written, but I get, you know, I think the intent is, is that the town-designated engineer is not going to have the authority to accept any deviations without buying from the planning department or engineering department. And they'll all be involved in those meetings.
We could change the language too, although, um, the engineer is not going to be happy if the TDE isn't happy. So the, the first conditional kind of supersede the other one, but you could also change the language so that they were consistent. The intent is that all things are addressed in writing to the satisfaction of the TDE and the town-designated engineer. I mean, and the engineering department.
Yeah, because once the TDE says, "We're okay," that goes back to you and back to engineering, and then, you know, it's reviewed, and you say, "Yeah, we're okay too," or, or "We don't agree."
Right. But it is technically to the satisfaction of both, but the town engineering department is sort of over and above the TDE.
Well, isn't it actually ultimately to the satisfaction of the town planning department? Like Number 11?
Well, that, Number 11 is really because sometimes, like, the lines for the signature blocks and stuff aren't on the plat, and when you guys see it, so mine are typically typos. But, um, you know, the engineering department pretty much always says, "Is the planning department happy?" before they give their final review as well, because we all work together.
Yeah, I wasn't trying to get too legalistic. It's just 9 and 11 have talked about being referred to the satisfaction of. And 10, while I think ultimately what you're talking about is responding to the satisfaction of the TDE, sometimes there's this back and forth that...
In writing, yeah.
That doesn't necessarily ultimately, you know, where the applicant may not necessarily agree with the TDE, or maybe they address some of it, but not all of it.
That is true. They do sometimes do that.
Morris, that happens all the time. You know, we're, we're going to send a letter in to the, to address the TDE concerns to the town, okay? And then the town has the ultimate say. You know, if my engineer doesn't agree with the TDE, then the town has to play referee and make the decision on which way to go. And the town has to sign off on it before we can have the pre-construction meeting. So it's really up to Matt, Matt in the end.
Good questions. Thank you, Mr. Oster, and everyone. Any other questions for the applicant or for the board or for the planning department? Okay? Hearing no other questions? And, uh, Mr. Henry, could you please call the roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Conlon.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. All right, resolution is adopted. Congratulations, Mr. Bazoin, and thank you to the board, especially Mr. McPartland for his hard work here. Of course, we're not done yet, and there's going to be some more site visits, and we'll make sure we do a good communication with the, the future landowners, okay? And thank you.
Thank you.
Next up, we have Resolution 2021-05, a resolution for site plan approval for a major accessory structure, a carport at 398 Anthony Street. And this resolution is conditional on granting an area variance, the ZBA granting an area variance on 22421 meeting. And summarize that resolution, which was posted, of course. Resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above-referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and therefore hereby approves this site plan contingent upon the following. One, an area variance from the ZBA of six foot and six inches of height allowing a major accessory structure measuring 21 foot, six inches, six inch high is required. Uh, Mr. Laflamme, do I have a motion on the resolution?
Yes, Chairman, I, I move to adopt the resolution.
Okay, move for adoption by Mr. Laflamme. Do I have a second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mr. Conlon, thank you. And discussion. Anything, Mr. Laflamme? Pretty straightforward?
Yeah, pretty straightforward. We reviewed it last week. We talked about how we got to this point with just misunderstanding the dimensions, and we understand the purpose of, of the function of the, of the structure. So no, I don't think there's any more to discuss unless someone else has a question.
No, thank you, Mr. Laflamme. The bottom line is, we're trying to help out here, workload. So we got a contingent upon the ZBA's approval. The ZBA does not approve the height variance, well, if it, you know, doesn't go forward. Have to work it out and, and see what we can do. And I guess we'll come back to, as a project, to see if we could help out the applicant in other ways. So it's all in the ZBA's hands, and if they approve it, we're all set with this project. Any other questions or comments?
Thank you.
Okay, no, thank you, Ms. Gagnon. Okay, Mr. Henry, how about calling a roll?
Mr. Laflamme.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Conlon.
Aye.
Mr. McPartland.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution is, uh, passes and adopted, uh, and, uh, you know, based on the ZBA action. So Ms. Gagnon, good luck with the ZBA. Um, and, and we got a couple of roofs there, so apparently we got a couple of positive votes already.
Yeah, well, it's J-Dog, you know? So that's perfect.
Oh, J-Dog.
Yeah, so they were approving too, all the dogs.
All right.
Well, thank you guys very much. I'll, uh, well, I guess we'll find out on the 24th. Well, thank you guys very much, uh, uh, well, I guess, well, I'll find out on the 24th.
Yep, the 24th, and, uh, good luck.
Okay, thank you, have a good night.
You, too, and thank you, everyone.
Bye-bye.
Right, next resolution tonight is Resolution 2021-06, a resolution for sketch plan denial for 2456 Hilltop Road. This is a two-lot subdivision application and ZBA referral. And again, the resolution, I'll get right to the meat, resolve that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission does hereby deny sketch plan approval for the proposed two-lot subdivision as shown in the above-referenced map, and be it therefore further resolved that the Planning Board finds it does not deem it necessary to make specific recommendation writing to the applicant insofar as the application is facially deficient in identifying lots which do not comply with the requirements of Chapter 220 zoning. Um, Mr. Leflam, do I have a motion on this resolution for Hilltop?
Oh, yes, Mr. Chairman, I, I say we move to deny the applicant.
Okay, so we're going to, uh, approve the resolution, which is denial of the, um, of the sketch plan. Okay?
I'll second it.
Yeah, seconded by Mr. Khan, and we'll open the floor for some discussion.
Yes, I'd just like to make a statement, um, the lots, uh, that you're going to be forwarding to the zoning board is specific, uh, to the 15 house, 15 properties on Hilltop. I believe that the proposed subdivision is in keeping with the immediate adjacent lots to the east of Hilltop at 1500, or 15,000 square feet, and even more so with the lots in the immediate neighborhood that range between 12,000 square feet and 15,000 square feet. So in conclusion, it is my opinion that the request for variance is not substanti- is not substantial, and will not cause a change or set a precedent in the neighborhood. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Sponable. Again, we're, you know, uh, this resolution is for denial, and we're also going to have to make our recommendation part of our discussion here, uh, we don't have it broken out, Laura, for a separate discussion tonight. So after we vote on this resolution, we're going to have to talk about our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. It kind of goes hand-in-hand with this, uh, uh, denial of the, uh, subdivision. Alright, or at least the sketch plan. Um, Mr. Sponable and the board, of course, uh, uh, ZBA is the authority in this matter, when it goes to the ZBA, you'll be heard, and, uh, this board will, uh, you know, uh, take hold of whatever decision the ZBA, uh, decides and, and take it from there.
Now, can I share a map of the actual ne- neighborhood around Hilltop, instead of just the 15 houses that you guys are submitting to the zoning board?
Uh, well, we're not submitting to the zoning board, you're going to have the right to submit what you want to the zoning board, and Mr. Briggs can jump in anytime he would like here, but, uh, uh, you know, the, the stuff that we've been working on is basically for our, uh, either recommendation or for, uh, uh, evaluation of this, uh, sketch plan. Um, you'll have, uh, there's a different metric for the Zoning Board of Appeals versus us, and you'll hear what our metric is when we, uh, make the recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals. Um, if you feel the need that you want to show us, uh, again, an aerial or something, I, I guess I don't have a problem with that, as long as the rest of the board doesn't.
Excuse me.
I guess I should ask, does Mr. Sponable know the process that happens after just denial?
No. No, so tonight, we're going, tonight, we haven't voted yet, but we'll take action on this resolution, which is recommending denial of the sketch plan. Um, and then what we'll also do is, uh, we're going to make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which is just a recommendation from this board. Uh, those things will be, you know, forwarded on to the Zoning Board of Appeals, and then you have your paperwork, because you're going to make application to the Zoning Board of Appeals, which has a different, uh, uh, different statute or, uh, decision-making than the Planning Board has, and so it'll be up to you to, uh, to convince the Zoning Board of Appeals that it's appropriate. Again, we'll follow suit and, uh, take their decision and, and, uh, work with you based on the outcome of that hearing.
So, 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 Mr. Chairman Walsh, just one question. Doesn't Mr., in the event of the approval of this, uh, of this resolution in front of us tonight, doesn't Mrs. Sponable need to make an application to the Zoning Board of Appeals? Or has that happened already?
Um, I don't... Go ahead, Laura.
After.
Afterwards.
Right, so before we make any recommendations to the ZBA, he would have to make an application to the ZBA, correct?
Right.
To fill the decision, yep.
Right, and we talked about this last meeting, is that, uh, it was too late to be able to make the, uh, February 24th meeting. Uh, so we're taking action tonight, but that will give the applicant, uh, time to get the dismissal, uh, to make the March meeting, I'm sure the date of the March meeting, I think it's the third Wednesday of the month. But Laura, you need to have your paperwork in by when for that meeting?
Um, well, typically the 15th, but if we know it's coming, we're a little bit flexible.
Okay, and that would be the application to the Zoning Board of Appeals.
That would be the 15th, 15th of March?
Of February, typically, so you typically have it in the 15th of the month before the ZBA meeting, but in this instance, because we've been working it through the Planning Board, and, um, we're well aware of the application, we typically be a little more flexible with the date.
Okay.
Right, you okay, Mr. Sponable?
So can I show you the subdivision, the, okay, so, um, hold on here. This is actually the neighborhood that we're talking about, okay? What you are presenting are just the houses on Hilltop itself?
Yeah, we need, you...
Hey, I'm not seeing it, I'm not seeing what you're presenting, sir.
Oh, I thought it said, "Show my screen."
Yeah, if you go to present now...
Yeah, I did.
Your entire screen, then you have to click on that screen. Um, click on the screen that's whichever monitor you're showing, and then it turns like blue, and then you got to hit the share button.
Okay, let's try this again, hold on. So it says share, so if I hit share...
There you go, you got it.
Okay, can you see it now, uh? Can you see it now? Okay, so let me, um, if I zoom out here, again, this is the neighborhood that, of Hilltop. You can't, the, what you are presenting here, um, is just the proper, again, just the properties of Hilltop itself, which is this section right here. But if you look in the neighborhood in general, my, my subdivision that I'm requesting fits within not only this R1, um, neighborhood, uh, but many other R1 neighborhoods within Niskiyou that have lot sizes under 15,000 square feet. So, uh, that's just, uh, that's all I'd like to share with you, I thank you guys for your time. Um, so you'll present that, um, you'll present that, uh, denial to me, you'll send it in mail, how do I get it? Uh, and from there, we can proceed forward with the zoning appeal, right?
Right, you, yeah, we're still not done yet, so we still got to vote on this, and then we're going to talk about, uh, our recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, so hang tight, and you'll get, you'll get, you'll get a copy of the, uh, of all that paperwork, uh, you know, that you can put together your case for the Zoning Board of Appeals, okay? And we appreciate your patience. Um, so, any other questions or comments regarding the resolution that's, uh, moved and seconded, seconded, and it's on the floor? Anybody? Okay, and this is again for the, uh, uh, denying of the sketch plan of the two-lot minor subdivision. Okay, Mr. Uh, Henry, please call the roll.
Mr. Leflam.
Just to confirm, we're, we're approving the denial within, with the...
Correct, we are approving the denial as written in the resolution.
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis.
Aye.
Mr. Khan.
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin.
Aye.
Mr. Darpino.
Aye.
Mr. Oster.
Aye.
Chairman Walsh.
Aye. The resolution approved, is approved, which denies a sketch plan for the proposed two-lot minor subdivision. Now, uh, with, with that said, we also have to make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, we don't have it under discussion, so we're going to take care of that during this, uh, new business right now. So typically, Mr. Sponable and to the board, uh, we, we make a recommendation to the Zoning Board of Appeals, um, and again, it's a recommendation, uh, and there's certain factors, and those factors are effect on the comprehensive plan, suitability of use in the area proposed, and our recommendation for the Zoning Board of Appeals. So, as we all, as we know, there's a, um, couple of problems with the lot as proposed, uh, the side yard setback for the one lot, uh, if, if the subdivision were to be approved, there would be a 7.2-foot, uh, a site, uh, variance of, you know, 7, like, 7.2-foot overload there, so the variance would require, required is 12.8 feet on the side yard, and then the lot sizes would not comply, uh, comply with the R1 18,000 square foot. It would result in a 15,248 square foot and 15,000 088 square foot, uh, lot sizes requiring variances of 2752 and 2912 square feet. Uh, so that's what we, uh, that's what the ZBA will have to act on, and that's what we need to make the recommendation on. So the first question is effect on the comprehensive plan. Um, Mr. Uh, Leflam, is there effect on the comprehensive plan?
No.
No. Okay, the recommendation, uh, for Mr. Leflam is that there is no effect on the comprehensive, uh, plan to the Zoning Board of Appeals. All those in favor of no effect on comprehensive plans signify by saying aye. Aye?
Aye.
Okay. Alright, is there anyone that's opposed to that?
You know, it's just by clarification, I know we've had this conversation before, we've never quite really reconciled it, I apologize, but I know, you know, we talk about zoning, and we have a certain zoning set out, that we always view that as being sort of like brought into the comprehensive plan. So that's why I'm a little bit, you know, and we sort of have this back and forth.
Yeah, we've had this discussion, it's a tough one. My view is that, you know, the comprehensive plan that said, like, uh, that roadway is supposed to go through there, and that's supposed to be parkland, and if you want to subdivide, I'd say that's an effect on the comprehensive plan. But the, but the comprehensive plans in the town code allows the Zoning Board of Appeal, Appeals to give relief, uh, and this isn't a residential thing, so my view is that there's no effect on the comprehensive plan itself. Otherwise, we wouldn't need that question, I think anything that would go to the Zoning Board of Appeals would be effect on the comprehensive plans, and I don't think that's the case. That's my, my view, and everybody's welcome to their view, of course.
Well, I feel like we talked about this at the Mohawk Commons, like, because they were asking for area variances, and we really got into it. And I think that we decided that an area variance in itself is not necessarily, it has an impact on the comprehensive plan, because it may be minor. If there was a statement in the comprehensive plan that said, "Density is an issue, and we don't want the Planning Board to be, be making things more dense," or, um, you know, characters of the, character, there, that further subdividing these small parcels is, is creating, is, is tearing at the fabric of these neighborhoods, and we really don't want to see that. If some, something like that, that you could follow, but an area variance in itself isn't, um, doesn't, isn't, isn't necessarily against the comprehensive plan.
Thank you, Laura, that's my view. Okay, so, uh, anybody that, uh, feels there's no effect, the, the ruling, or the call is no effect on a comprehensive plan, is everybody in agreement with that? Is there anybody that's not in agreement with that? Okay. Hearing no one in agreement, there is no effect on the comprehensive plan. Suitability of use, Mr. Leflam.
Uh, it's suitable.
You're saying that the subdivision is suitable?
Well, it's suitable that it's a, that it's subdivision of housing, but unsuitable for the zone that the, the lot is currently in.
Yeah, me that can help you out, usually in this case, if the, we feel it's not suitable, because, you know, in this case, the lot size, we would say it's not suitable, and why, you know? Why we feel it's not suitable, and I know you, you, Mr. Henry, and you have done a lot of work looking at lot sizes, at least along Hilltop. So, um, so, I can help you, is that not suitable, is the call here?
Uh, that does help, yeah, I, I was kind of looking at the literal interpretation of why we even considered it, but when we considered it, it wasn't suitable for the zoning that is currently set, and certainly in the immediate neighborhood that this plot would be within.
Right, I think it's, I think they, from our discussions, again, just trying to help out here, is that was not suitable, because it creates two non-conforming lots. Uh, and lots are smaller, uh, than at least the lots along Hilltop, based on the data that Mr. Henry put together, in fact, it would be that, even though it's not marginal, it's still that two of the smallest lots would result if the Zoning Board of Appeals were to grant these area variances. Uh, that's what I saw, is that being reasonable?
Yeah, not suitable.
Alright, not suitable, uh, again, for the reasons I, I believe I just stated, none, two, two lots would be non-conforming. Um, uh, it'd be smaller than the other lots, at least along Hilltop, to Mr. Sponable's, uh, comment there. Um, and I think that's pretty, pretty much it, I couldn't really think of any other, uh, uh, reasons for not being suitable, it's just that, I guess we could state that we're concerned also about setting precedent. I think it might be appropriate to put that in there, uh, if we're, again, trying to discourage, uh, uh, anyone from buying property and, and then subdividing it, uh, and not complying with the zoning district, uh, that the property is contained within, right?
May I ask a question, or no?
Sure, no, you can, you can, you know, and, um, I, I don't see, I guess I don't see why not.
I, I'm just, when you're saying you don't want to set precedent, there are hundreds of houses in our R1 residential districts that do not meet the 1800 or the 1500 square foot.
Let me, let me rephrase that, do not set precedent on a go-forward basis. I think that, that's the, that's the trick, you know, we, we don't want, you know, people, uh, purchasing land in this unit that, you know, it's, you know, 30,000 square feet, and trying to subdivide, uh, all the time, that's not what we're, you know, we want, we want people to follow the R1 or R2 zoning regulations. And, uh, and again, the Zoning Board of Appeals has the authority to give you relief from that. Alright? Any other thoughts on that, that's unsuitable, the, the call is not suitable?
Well, I feel, um, it might be appropriate here to just reference character of the neighborhood as, um, as I believe, um, the data Clark gathered around lot coverage, um, best, best, um, that, the, the, this, this application, I think, would also be unique for the zoning board's consideration, given the, given the sheer size of the existing home on the lot. Um, you know, Mr. Sponable mentions that there are homes that are, um, situated on 15,000 square foot lots in the, in the vicinity, but, but what we don't know is what is the square footage of the homes that sit on those lots, and certainly, um, based on the information gathered by the Planning Department, and namely Clark, um, this home is one of the larger homes, um, in the neighborhood.
Any other comments on that? Alright, thank you, Mr. McPartlin, okay, so, proposal is not suitable, all those in favor of, it's not, that it's not suitable, signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone have a different opinion or opposed to that? Okay, decision is that it's not suitable. And that next is the recommendation to the ZBA, should the ZBA grant or deny the variance, Mr. Leflam?
I recommend they deny the variance.
Right, recommendation from the plan, from the project lead and the planning board is that the ZBA deny the variance. Um, I guess that's pretty straightforward as far as comments go. Uh, all those that favor, uh, denial signify by saying aye.
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 Anyone opposed? Okay, hearing opposed, the recommendation to the ZBA is that they deny the request for the area variances. Um, so Sponable, I know that's not you want, much like to hear, but again, uh, this is a recommendation from the Planning Board, and I do wish you luck in front of the Zoning Board of Appeals, hopefully you can put together a strong case, and, uh, um, and we'll see what they have to say. If they're authority on this, and again, we'll do a good job for you, if the Zoning Board of Appeals regrets the area variances, and you come back, does well work with you to, uh, to complete the subdivision process.
Okay, and you, thank you for your patience.
Okay. Thank you very much, too, for your patience. Excuse me. Okay, so that's, uh, that's it on, uh, Resolution 2021-06, at least for now. Um, I just want to mention, we have three more resolutions tonight, uh, we didn't have, have them down for discussion. I did talk to the Planning Department, and, uh, there was an effort here to, um, to basically try to minimize work, since these resolutions were simple, simple tenant changes, basically a one-for-one retail, retail, you know, office-to-office. Uh, we thought that it would be appropriate to get these done tonight to help out the applicants and to help out the Planning Department. But if anybody has any concerns about any of them, you always have the opportunity to request that we table these resolutions. Okay, with that said, first one is Resolution 2021-07, a resolution for site plan approval for a tenant change at 2341 Knott Street, and that's ARS. Um, actually, that's spelled wrong, that's one of my comments, and I don't know how to say it. ARS, it's A-L-V, A-L, oh, is it A-L-E-U-T is what it's supposed to be? Uh, Alut remediation, um, okay, and that resolution is posted, and we'll have to change the spelling in the resolution, but basically the resolution states, "Resolved that the Planning Board and Zoning Commission finds the above-referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals, and does hereby approve the site, the tenant change." And again, this is at Shopright Plaza, and it's 2341 Knott Street, and it's a office-to-office tenant change. So I'll make a motion that we approve this resolution, and do I have a second?
Second, Mr. Chairman.
Seconded by Mr. Oster. Okay, and I see we have the applicant, uh, representative of the applicant on line, is that correct, Mr.?
Yes.
The, the caper?
Yes.
Okay. Um, and so the board really doesn't know anything about this tenant, uh, obviously, I, I did take a look at their webpage, that's where I found that the spelling was, uh, different, it's A-L-E-U-T remediation, A, uh, A-R-S, A-L- That's where I found that the spelling was different. It's A L E U T remediation, A, uh, A R S, A L E U T remediation. It sounds like, go ahead, Mr. McCaper.
Uh, it's Alouette.
Alouette?
Yes. It's in Indian.
It's Alaskan and it's Aliu.
Yes. It's, it's, it's Alaskan. It's, it's, it's a, there's Alaskan ownership in the company.
Ah, and so basically engineering, engineering office space is, is what I, what I understand it to be. Is that correct?
Yeah, it's, it's an, it's an off-site office for cleanup they're doing at, at Knowles. And basically they're, they're in Knowles right now in a work trailer and they need more room and something with a little bit better heat. And, you know, basically they're taking over this space that the last company that was in doing the remediation there occupied a couple of years ago.
Right, exactly. Yep. So that's why I was, I was comfortable with this. It's straight, straightforward change for office space.
There, there's, you know, we're cleaning the space and they're moving in. They're setting up tables and chairs. There's not even cubicles. There's, um, it's tied to.
There's no signage. There's no signage or anything.
No, there's no signage anticipated. I mean, there may be a paper sign hung in the door, but that'll be about it.
Yeah, so, so just for completeness, it's only for people, right?
Correct.
I mean, you're not going to be ever transporting anything from the Knowles site to this building, to this office space, right?
Not on purpose, but maybe on their shoes, but, no.
No, and, and there was a previous remediation contractor over there, so this is not unique, you know? It's close by and it's a good opportunity to get some, uh, rent floor space, it looks like to me, so.
Yeah, and this is, this is the office workers for the job. It's not the guys doing the remediation. No.
Yep. Dan, can you have a question?
I believe we're going to clarify that it's on Knot Street East.
Oh, yes, Laura, or Ms. Gold, thank you. Good comment. So it's twenty-three forty-one Knot Street East is the, uh, the actual address. That's on our resolution. Thank you, Ms. Gold.
About how many people do you expect to be there at any one time?
Six to eight.
Okay, so that's within the parking requirement, I mean, within the parking available of the.
Yep. Okay, any questions for the applicant? Okay, and, um, yeah, we have a motion in the second, so, uh, Mr. Henry, please call the roll.
Oops, it looks like he jumped off. I feel like the bandwidth has been bad lately.
Yeah, it's, it's a little, been a little tough.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis? Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
And Chairman Walsh?
Aye. Resolution passes and the tenant change is approved. Uh, good luck, sir, and thank you for your time tonight.
Yep.
And we'll, we'll update the spelling of Alouette in the, uh, in the resolution, please, okay? At a couple of different locations, right?
Aliu. Clark, you get muted off?
No, the, the button right next to the mute button is the leave the meeting button. So don't be careful.
You can get muted also, they say.
It's an awesome design, right?
Okay. So next we have, let's see, another resolution again for tenant change. This is resolution twenty twenty-one zero eight, a resolution for site plan approval for a tenant change at four-four-one Balltown Road, Suite Two. And that's Metro Mattress in Mansion Square. And let's see, I think I got the right one. Nope, not one. Metro Mattress. And now we have an applicant arrived, but let me just again summarize. Resolved that the planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan and signage, and signage meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plan approvals and therefore hereby approves the site plan, signage and tenant change. And this is for, uh, Metro Mattress at Mansion Square. So I have a motion to approve the resolution. Um, and move by, for approval by Mr. Oster.
And I'll second it.
And seconded by Mr. Khan. Thank you again. Uh, we do have a representative, I believe, online tonight for this, uh, application.
Yes.
It's Luigi, right?
Yep.
And it looks like it's, uh, mattress place to mattress place, so you can't get any more better for a tenant change, huh?
Yep, same, same tenant, same type of tenant. Um, doing minimal work in there too. Just, I think we're putting up one wall and a few new outlets. And just paint and just getting turned over.
Now, the signage was, uh, in the packet, by the way, and the signage is actually decreasing square footage for both signs at the, uh, in the packet. So I didn't see a problem with that, um, which is always nice, uh, smaller, so.
Yeah.
It's pretty straightforward.
Yeah, just one informational change. So, um, why was the change made?
It was a mattress firm before, now it's Metro Mattress. So it, it's a different tenant.
Okay, so it's just.
A different mattress company that they go to the store. Now, is, is this Metro Mattress, is, is I moving from, uh, Mohawk Commons across the street into this building?
I, I would assume so. I don't know, actually. I didn't ask.
Unfortunately, it may create some, uh, uh, empty square footage elsewhere, um, but it looks like it's a more prominent location along Balltown Road, this, this location for, um, for Metro Mattress.
It wasn't more recent, going to be going into Metro Mattress? We.
Yeah.
Oh, that's right.
A month or two ago, right?
Yeah.
That's right. Thank you, Daisy. Forgot about that.
But it's, it's still a domino effect because they're, but it, it's good that at least they're, you know, up, upgrading square footage. And I think later on, we have an application for something down there, right?
Yep, we'll be talking about the next one, which is.
Yeah.
Fill up some space, hopefully.
I just wanted to know what the state of the mattress business was. It's all right.
It's a sleepy business, but somebody's got to do it.
Yeah, that's right. It's good with Mr. Chairman Walsh.
Yeah. Okay, any other questions for the applicant or comments? No, please call the roll, Mr. Henry.
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. Resolution's approved. The tenant change for Metro Mattress at Mansion Square and signage is approved. Uh, good luck with the business there.
Thanks.
Okay. And thank you again, everyone. And that brings us to our final, uh, tenant change resolution for tonight. And that's resolution twenty twenty-one dash zero nine, a resolution for site plan approval for a tenant change at four-three-six Balltown Road. And this is Burlington Clothing Store. And the Burlington Clothing Store has proposed to go into the old Bed Bath and, uh, Bed Bath and Beyond square footage at, uh, Mohawk Commons, which is a good thing. And that resolution is pretty straightforward, which reads, resolve that the planning board and zoning commission finds the above referenced site plan meets the requirements of the zoning code and previous site plans approvals and therefore hereby approves this site plan and tenant change. Uh, do I have a motion for Burlington Coat to replace, uh, Bed Bath and Beyond at Mohawk Commons? Motion for approval.
So moved.
Moved by Mr. Oster. And seconded?
Seconded. Okay, we got Mr. Diarpino.
Thank you, thank you, Dave.
But there's no, there's no signage in the packet. I, I, you know.
It's correct. Well, I was going to say no signage at this point. It's strictly the tenant change. Uh, if they come into the planning office, and I believe that if the signage is, uh, uh, compliant, we may not see it. But if there's any concerns or Laura wants to bring it to us, we'll take a look at it. But as far as I know, they have not received an application for signage yet.
Yeah, and I just want to be clear. They're calling themselves Burlington Clothing Store, right? Not Coat Factory, is they.
I think they changed, I was Googling it. I think they changed their company name a couple, a few months back.
Right, yes. Because then they'll only get customers in around the wintertime. Yeah.
More than Coats, right? So, um, uh, you know, retail to retail, so this is a great, you know, great thing, you know? I heard about it, so that's good news. Get some, uh, take care of some vacancies and have some order of, uh, services available to, to the public there at Mohawk Commons. So we have motion and second. Any questions at all or comments? Nope, I have none either. Mr. Henry, please.
Mr. Laflamme?
Aye.
Mr. Scrubby Tennis?
Aye.
Mr. Khan?
Aye.
Mr. McPartlin?
Aye.
Mr. Diarpino?
Aye.
Mr. Oster?
Aye.
Chairman Walsh?
Aye. Resolution's approved. And then we have, is it Mr. Flather, um, online from All Commons? Congratulations and we look forward to Burlington Clothing, uh, Store being at All Commons.
Very good. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, that's it for, uh, new business tonight. So, um, uh, we have discussion items. We have nothing listed under discussion tonight. We took care of pretty much business during the new business section. But, uh, if you have any questions, we can always talk to Laura during commission, commission business or reports. So under reports, we have a couple of things to talk about. First up being seventeen fifty-nine Union Street, Vacaro Family Dentistry sign that was included in our packet. I believe Laura, you just wanted us to take a look at that to see if we have any questions or comments on it.
Yeah, Allet Clark actually featured both these items. He was working on them with the sign company.
This is just like Tequila's, uh, LT's Mexican Grill going to Tequila's, or maybe even simpler. Um, our understanding is that Dr. Molino has retired, so the dentistry is now Vacaro Family Dentistry. Sign is exactly the same, um, as the Molino and Vacaro sign, using the same pedestals on the side and everything.
It seems straightforward and it's just a matter of, uh, you know, same lighting and everything. So it's just a matter of building permit or whatever they need, right?
Yeah, that'll just be a building permit. We just wanted to show it to everyone.
And Clark had to go back and forth with them a little bit to make sure that it was actually per approvals. They may have actually built the other sign a little bit too big, but he's got it back down to what was approved. And, um, it looks good, I think.
No, looks good. Any comments from the board? Any concerns?
I'm sorry, I was, I was, yeah, this, this sign is within our code regulation, right? Yes. Okay.
No, thanks Clark for working on that and sounds like we're all set, uh, from a board standpoint on the sign.
Except, James, I think it may have received a variance for its distance to the right-of-way because a lot of those monument signs in Union, if you set them back ten feet from the lot line, they're too far. I think this one does have a variance for its location, but the size is consistent.
Yeah, I mean, I recall, we did this all with the Union Street, with the, with the Medical Arts Building, right? So I think there was a, there was some kind of a variance, but.
Yes, it's basically right at the right-of-way. So there is definitely a variance for the setback from the right-of-way.
Yeah, so, but all that still is in place, correct?
Yeah, it's going to this, in the exact same spot. And most of the monument signs on Union Street are closer than ten feet, just by the nature of that corridor and where the buildings sit.
Yeah, and the, the key thing here is that it's, you know, Vacaro was part of the business that was there before, right? And so it's not really like it's a new dentistry.
He, he was, he was, he was his junior partner.
Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, so it's not really a tenant change.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, this is just a sign. Yep, got it. Thank you.
Okay, so it sounds like the board's okay with the sign and it's already an existing, uh, area variance, it sounds like, so if the size is appropriate, we're good. Okay, thanks Clark. The next one, Clark, is another si, some signage package we received, that's thirteen thirty Balltown Road for the CVS facade signs and drive-through signs. I don't know if Laura, if you want to be able to pull that up this time?
I had a question on this one.
Yep.
Uh, and maybe the laws change, I didn't realize it, but I thought there had, because right now it says pharmacy, department, department within. Do they still have to have that sign up or something change?
I, I don't have an answer to that. Maybe let's pull up what they submitted, um, and see if we can zoom in on. Does a new one say the pharmacy, is it, what does it say, Mr. I still have today, does it say, uh, department within or pharmacy within or something like that it says, or?
A pharmacy, yeah, within or something like that.
Yeah, bring it up, Juan.
Because they add a heart too. And I'm guessing this is just like a logo thing, because they don't have that heart now, I don't believe.
So CBS is doing quite a bit of rebranding, actually. Whoa, sorry, um.
You go back there, uh, that one, yeah, there we go. Yeah, it looks to me, I mean, basically it's just a slight change with the heart on it.
Yeah.
Mr. Mr. Oster's question, I'm not sure if it still has that, uh, verbiage on the bottom about, uh, pharmacy or department within or whatever it said on the sign.
No, I think it's right there. If you keep going, it's very small, right?
Okay, so it's not, okay, I didn't see it in the, in the rendering, okay?
Because it's so tiny. It's like right there.
Okay, wow, all right. Again, I, I don't know whether, you know, that, that's not really my, you know, freely for me. I mean, I'm assuming that is, that it meets whatever rule they have to meet in terms of, you know, noting that there's a department within, I, you know.
Yeah, I mean.
Notice is it, I don't know why my computer's doing that. I'm sorry, guys, is that there isn't currently a drive-through pharmacy sign. This would be entirely new.
Right. Well, let's talk about the facade. So the other ones, it basically, it looks like it adds a heart to it, right? The CVS logo's just changed slightly with the heart. I think that's the only change. It seems straightforward to me. Uh, is that if. That you're taking.
We're still within our approved, I mean, we're still within the appropriate dimensions, right, Clark?
Yes, we're well within those.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
The frontages are obvi, obviously very significant and they're, they're well under the fifty square feet.
Right.
And I think they're also removing the little CVS backslash pharmacy.
Okay.
Backslash, I think is going away. Yeah.
Okay. So we're okay with those, um, uh, facade signs, replacements? It seems straightforward, right?
I presume that's just a, that's a corporate logo, like the same thing like with the, the bank sign we had a couple of months ago. Where it was, that's just how they're now, their corporate logo.
I believe so, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Now, to Laura's point. Yeah, excuse me. To Laura's point here, there is no, I took a look right over here today. Everybody knows this is a drive-through. It was a pretty good line, but there is no sign that says drive-through on it. Now it's currently blank. Um, uh, where that shows the new sign there. What about the side?
And that's not, and that's not lit or anything, right? That's just like a, a non, that's just a little demarcation. There's not, it's not going to be actually lit.
Doesn't look it to me.
Yeah.
But that was my take. It was just basically posting a sign on that, uh, empty facade, right, Clark?
Yes, I don't think there's any internal lighting.
Years ago, when we approved this, we were just, you know, we were sensitive to making sure that the lighting was not going to be anything which was going to disturb the neighborhood.
Yep, especially on that side.
Yeah.
Agreed, Mr. Oster. But there's no internal, my eyes are shot. I'd have to pull up the thing, but it's, there's no internal lighting on this. It's just a sign, right?
Yeah, it looks like it. Four inches. It's just vinyl. No lighting detail on here, so I'd say it's definitely not lit.
The only thing that stood out to me when I took a look at it, if you go back to the, uh, the, the picture of the drive-through, Laura, if you can get there. There you go. It just seemed like it was large, that's all. I mean, you know, for, for the amount of linear, uh, footage on the, uh, uh, parapet or whatever you want to call it versus the size of sign, it seemed to be pretty big, but I can go. We're just looking for feedback on this, Laura. Is that what we're looking for, Mr. Henry?
I think actually, I mean, Clark and I can double check. We got this early and he was giving you guys a heads up on it, but I bet if we really looked at the code, this would probably need a waiver, my guess.
Yeah, I mean, it just seemed large, uh, to me. I don't know how the rest of the board feels for this sign. Um, especially since they've been getting along fine without one, but, um, they, you know, if they want that sign, that's great. We're okay with that, just.
So, I, I, I mean, if it, I agree with Chairman Walsh. It does, and thank you for pointing out Chairman Walsh. It does look a little big. So I think, you know, the standard thing is, can they get it to be, I don't think they have an issue, to go back to it, I don't think they have an issue in having this sign, correct? I think they're allowed this. Right, the way, any waiver would have to be just for its size?
No. Sounds like the planning department's got to do their analysis. Of course, we just saw this, all right, Laura, Clark, on, on the signage?
Right, right, right.
I mean, yes, I would think so. That typically you're only allowed one facade sign per.
Yeah.
Per facade wall. And if this were facing, um, Van Antwerp directly, it may count on the Van Antwerp side, but it's sort of facing the way that, you know, one of the signs, I can go back, but it's facing the way one of the heart signs is already on the facade. So I would think that potentially we could issue a building permit for them to change the two big signs and separate out the pharmacy sign. And they could ask the planning board for a waiver. Like, they are doing some internal changes to the building as well. Um, they're adding like a minute clinic, which is very similar to the service that they already have where they would, um, do flu vaccinations and stuff, but obviously the vaccination world is a little bit more intense than it used to be. do flu vaccinations and stuff, but obviously the vaccination world is a little bit more intense than it used to be. So I think they're kind of carving out a little space there to continue to provide vaccinations to people. So I just received those drawings today. It may be administrative, just building permit for them to add that kind of little enclosure for people to get vaccines, or may rise the level of planning board approval. But in either case, we can let the planning board know what's going on on the inside, and if they wanna consider that pharmacy side. My guess is, and I don't know if you have any opinion on this, Clark, you're like the super sign man now, but my guess is it probably needs a waiver.
The other thing is, just when I look at this as well, too, are they, I know they're also doing COVID testing there, too. Is there anything about the, you know, because I thought the part that was closest to the building was where they were doing the COVID testing, not picking up prescriptions. Like, I don't know, it's gonna be a little like, if that's, maybe I'm wrong, maybe, you know. I just don't know whether having that drive-through pharmacy would give the impression that that side is the pharmacy pickup, and the right, and the other side's COVID testing, but I.
Yeah, it seems awful large if there, I mean, there's two lanes there, right, in the drive-through. It seems like the sign kind of covers both lanes. It's kind of like just a, basically a directional sign that said, this is the drive-through pharmacy. And so it's different than the CVS sign that's facing that road that we just talked about, right, the replacement sign. But again, I don't have a problem, personally, I don't have a problem with the sign. Just take a look at the size of it to see if it, you know, can be more of a reasonable aspect ratio versus the linear square footage there, or linear footage on the wall there.
Right, I mean, you know, like, again, same old, make, make sure that they don't need any variances for.
Yeah.
Anything, right? Both size and/or the number sign. And for everyone to know, the Minute Clinic for CVS was something that was pre-COVID.
It was, yeah.
Yeah, I think there was an inevitability that it would come here, so.
It's like, it's actually like three little rooms where you can kind of get vaccinated in private and just have a couple of other things checked out, I think.
Yep.
I guess, like, to summarize, it sounds like we're not against the sign on the drive-through, just that if they could, the planning department does their analysis to see whether waiver is required or whether the size is appropriate, you know, we can take action on it if, if we need to.
Yeah.
But it does seem to be a little bit big for that side, you know, side.
And in fact, it just might be worth asking. I, I don't recall seeing it on the application, but I think Minute Clinic also has its own logo somewhere.
I asked them that. I was very, I was wondering if that, if they're gonna need to add more signage for that, because it's two people, it's two separate applicants, of course, right?
Yeah.
So Clark and I will try to coordinate a little bit on that and get back to him. I asked him if the Minute Clinic was gonna need to have its own branding. They have not gotten that way.
And Laura, when you, when you speak to them, or Clark, if there's anything regulatory that they, a reason why they need the sign is regulatory, please let us know. Obviously, we want to do anything we can to, to move this along, to help them out, and to come to resolution quickly, so. I guess we'll just wait for the planning department to do the analysis and see what we got. And we're okay with the other two, we're okay, it sounds like, with the other two signs, the facade signs, the changes.
Yeah, I had a, I had a conversation with, you know, a couple of our town board members today, like, because we're trying to clarify, like, what CVS is doing with vaccinations versus what they're doing. Like, you had just mentioned, Jengus, with this Minute Clinic, and if one is dependent on the other or what. Because we just want to separate, obviously, if they need emergency signage and emergency things to do vaccinations, that, that, that will all go forward so that they can provide the services that they need with the town, and, you know, we can kind of backfigure it out. But if this is kind of separated, and they can do what they need to do, and we can take, you know, and we can do a normal look at it and just be, you know, quick, quick with what we're looking at, that, that would be my preference. But obviously, if there's, if it's hinging on people being, having access to vaccines in their neighborhood, we're gonna do emergency approvals.
Yeah, and that, that makes a lot of sense, and the key thing is, nothing in this sign application reflects vaccines, right?
Exactly so. And actually, the Minute Clinic staff that I was looking through, like, to your point, actually, does not show. So, and, and, but I did reach out and say, you know, what do you need for COVID versus what is, you know, what is this? So we can add clarification so that they can get up and running with whatever they need for people.
Yeah, it's not like they're gonna change the S to a D and put in a couple of vowels in between.
Exactly.
Okay.
We are aware, like, we do know that, because apparently Glenville announced that they're doing, the Glenville CVS announced that they're doing the vaccinations, too. So there was questions about this CVS and what's going on. So we are aware that people, you know, are concerned and want that service there, and this will not hold up that service, that is an emergency service that, you know, can occur. And we'll just make sure that the planning board catches up with whatever needs to be done.
Yep, 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 yeah, I mean.
Sounds good. We want to support anything we can with COVID, okay? All right, any questions on that, comments? All right, so here are the analysis shows, and we'll do what we can to help out. All right, lastly, under reports, is this the COVID-19, COVID-19 update? Anything, Laura, Clark?
I did, I was trying to see what the thought was for town hall, and I think that they do still kind of want to make sure that the staff, and especially the ones that work with the public, you know, on a regular basis, are fully vaccinated. So it does seem like there's not, it's not gonna be tomorrow. It's still a little ways out until we open our doors. Even though I think that the data is, you know, doing much better, and it's, you know, I feel very positive about it going down so much, but. But I think we're still gonna wait till we're absolutely, so till we're there, till it's safe, and then, and then I'll let you guys know. But I actually don't have any update. I tried to get kind of a timeline, and we still don't have one.
Hey, thanks, Laura. All right, under reports, any questions for Laura, anybody? Clark, okay. All right, we'll just do commission business if everybody's ready. Mr. Oster, you have anything for us tonight?
I do not.
Thank you, sir. Mr. Darpino.
Were we gonna talk about any of the Knott Street or Crescent Street development projects as part of this meeting?
Oh, that's a really good idea. So we, we, we have kind of a committee that's looking at them, and I did pass them out to the committee that was looking at them. But I think when, it's good to note, for the record, that when we get kind of a, a group idea and have some different things to look at for Knott Street, Crescent Intersection, and Via Del Mar kind of area traffic coming, is that we want to run those ideas through a public hearing held at the planning board, and that probably is forthcoming. Like, where we're at right now is there an initial meeting to see what is feasible, like what the town could actually like handle, and then they came out with some concepts which were given to those people who had looked at it, some of the department heads and some members of the planning board, and the Complete Streets Committee, and a couple other committees there. And then they're gonna give their comments back to the engineer, and then we're gonna kind of have a package that will roll out to the public. And when we do do that, the planning board was selected as the place to do the public interaction, because you guys are so good with them. So I, I mean, I can send, if you guys are interested, I can send you the concept levels that were sent to, just very initially, to the, you know, to the board, it's not really board, to like the task force, so that you guys kind of have an idea there. And then I can let you know what the timeline is for when we're reaching out to the public.
All right, so that's a good question, David. Should we assign a project, if it's gonna be the planning board handling this thing, handling these proposals, or going through the planning board, should we assign a project lead and get all the information out that we're working on to, to everybody on the board? You know, it's quite a bit there to look at. I've got it in my inbox. I guess we want responses back by this Friday, Laura, I believe is what your email said, right?
Uh, yeah, per the MJ's timeline, we are trying to, because we're trying to get it out to the public so that they can take a look at it.
I mean, I'm, I'm willing to do it, just since when Mrs. King was doing her thing with Crescent, right, at least. We had put some thinking and thought and awareness into it. I'm very happy to have a team member, a co-team member also. So I'm assuming you'll send something out, Laura?
Yeah, I can send you, I'll just forward you the email that went out to all the task force that has the, the ideas that were initially.
David, do you want to jump in?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I would love to co-lead this with you, Mr. Khan.
Yes, I would love it if you did co-lead it with me.
Okay, good.
Great, thank you, guys. That's, that's great. And then Laura, we could, you know, get that out to everybody, and, you know, start an agenda statement for the next meeting, and we'll just have a discussion on, on the, you know, the proposals and get some input. More, more minds are better than just the several that are there, right, so.
Agreed. Yep, that was a really good comment, thank you.
Yep, thanks, David. Anything else, Dave?
Uh, no.
Okay, Mr. McPartlin?
Uh, nothing to report, thank you.
Thank you, and Mr. Khan.
No, thank you. Nothing, thanks.
Mr. Scraby Tennis?
Yeah, I just have one brief comment to make. Based on COVID, I think we should anticipate in the next 24 months that Niskuna, as well as the county, will experience a, pretty, some significant foreclosures. And certainly, we should anticipate in the nearer term, evictions after the eviction moratorium and foreclosure moratorium is lifted sometime, I think in 2021. I think there'll be some significant action. It's pretty clear that there's tremendous, that there's, they anticipate between $11 and $50 billion worth of indebtedness that tenants may be sharing across the country. For your information, you know, Niskuna's got about 10,000, 9,000 households, about 20% of that are renters. And of those renters, you know, we should, you could possibly consider in the next year, some level of evictions will occur across our larger projects. And to that end, I think we should also anticipate some foreclosure action happening, particularly in 24 months, maybe 36 months. With that, I just want to let Laura know that I'm working somewhat informally with the county to establish some data about what, who, the delinquencies, particularly with mortgages. There is a significant set, we think, of homeowners across the county that are over 90 days delinquent. This is all to say, I think there's, there's no action that we'll be taking, and there's little that we can do, certainly in the near term. But we should anticipate some stress on the, I think, multifamily and the single-family mortgage market in the next couple of years, unless there's some, you know, federal intervention in this market. So with that, I just want to make Laura and Clark aware that, you know, maybe initiate a discussion with the town board about this, of this to be, have some awareness and think about it. And as soon as I get some basic data about this impact to the county, and particularly Niskuna, I'll share it with you. So that's just, just a point I wanted to make. This has been a particular concern of mine.
Yep. And, and Michael, thanks for bringing that up, and, you know, and I guess I would ask, and it's really a communication to the town board, I don't know if anyone's on tonight, but. Is it, is all we can do just be bystanders on that whole process when it does occur? Or is there something a little bit more, you know, resident focus that we can do to, so I'll say to work to, to help, right, to make, to make that situation better?
I would love to find that outcome, Jengus. I'm delighted that you were to speak to that issue, yeah. I mean, again, it's very early now, but you can't manage what you can't measure, and I want to find ways to measure the problem. And we don't, and the way to measure this problem is to start to determine the number of mortgage delinquencies we may have in our census tract, and basically in Niskuna. It'll be hard to get to that data, but there's ways to get to it. It's just something, you know, we have an active and robust land bank that may have to turn, you know, come into action in sometime in the next few years, but it'll be a concern. It'll be, it'll be a matter in some way, shape, or form that'll come before this board over the next few years.
Thank you, Mr. Scraby Tennis. You have anything further? Okay, Mr. Laflamme?
Nothing to add.
And Ms. Gold?
Nothing to add.
Thank you, and Ms. Shenfield?
Uh, just a quick thing. I attended one of the Planning Federation courses last Wednesday during lunch with Mr. Mark Schachner. It was actually really informative. I'm just gonna say that I saw something else is coming up. They're really respectful of time, though. I mean, I logged off and took, you know, my lunch break to do it. And, you know, between 12 and 1, they were pretty much on, you know, point, by 1:05 they were done, so. It's, they're definitely worth, you know, credit and, you know, good, good consolidated information.
All right, thank you, thank you. All right, I have nothing for time.
You can actually go back and watch those videos, or at least the ones of you that I bought those tickets for. They are posted, and we're a little bit flexible with them. So if you do go back and watch those videos, you can just kind of build up your credit library there.
And where are those videos posted, Laura?
If you go to your Eventbrite ticket and click on them, it gives you a link to all of them, and they're not time-sensitive, you can watch all of them.
Oh, okay. Okay, I have no comments for tonight or questions. Anybody have anything else? No? It was a good meeting tonight, we got a lot done. Do we have a motion to adjourn? Motion to adjourn by Mr. Khan and seconded by Mr. Oster, thank you, gentlemen. All those with favors of adjournment signify by saying aye.
Aye.
If you want opposed? Hearing no one oppose, we'll adjourn tonight's meeting at, it looks like 8:25 PM. Thank you, everybody. It was a good working session tonight. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.